Yeah.
Janice had it all under control.
We've been blaming it on Janice, now we know. It's not her.
Alrighty. Let's call this Planning and Commission meeting to order on August 28th, just a little bit after 1:00 at this time. I'd like to have Mr. Craig Slay do our invocation, please.
Mr. Craig, Father, thank you so much for, again, the privilege of coming together, conducting this business. Father, thank you to these gentlemen for their place of service. Pray, Father, that as we conduct the business of the candidate today, we'll do so in a manner that's pleasing to you. Father, we'll consider our fellow man and the needs of our community ahead of our own needs. Father, thank you for the men and women who fight for the privilege that we have today to assemble together to conduct the business. Father, bring them home safely, Christ amen.
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 Thank you, Craig. Okay, at this time, we have consideration approval of the August 6, 2014 minutes.
Much approved.
Got a motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Morrison. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Old Business.
Okay, the first item under Old Business is a dimensional variance request from Mike Rosier Construction at 829 Highway 469 North. This is located on the west side of Highway 469. It's a 1.22 acre parcel that's zoned C2. You can see the aerial of the property here. The site plan. The dimensional variance they're requesting is from the rear setback. They're requesting a 6.6 foot variance on the northeast corner is where the building won't meet the setback requirements. They're also asking for a dimensional variance on the number of parking spaces to go from 42 to 32. This is, they're proposing to build a 9,020 square foot building for a Dollar General store. These show the pictures of the elevations. They have split face block on the building.
Is that three sides or four?
Three sides, metal on the rear. And these are just, this is the actual lot where the Dollar General store will be built. There's a vacant white church on the property now. This is the Monterey Fire Department. This is just a private garage there, and this is on the corner, convenience store, corner of Monterey and 469. The property has been posted and we haven't received any calls at all.
Okay.
I've had nothing but, I guess, praise.
Right.
Calls, yeah. Glad to hear what is going there.
It's pretty much what I've been getting, so, alrighty.
Well, we need to make a motion.
Well, this is just a review of hearings that are scheduled for Tuesday.
Okay. B.
Alright, the second item is a dimensional variance request of P&amp;Q developers. It's at Willow Grant 2, Part 3. It's on the south side of Castle Woods Boulevard. The actual part that they're requesting right now, well, it's on Phase 3, and it's not the whole 14.18 acres. The property is zoned R1C. They're asking for a five-foot variance from the rear setback of 20 feet on lots 58, 61, 62, and 63. Due to the fact that the lots that are located in cul-de-sacs have short side lot lines, and it prohibits building within the normal setbacks. We've not received any calls on this as well.
Okay.
Alright, next is a conditional use request for Jeanette Patrick at 916 Andrew Chapel Road. It's on the east side of Andrew Chapel Road. She's requesting to place a 2,016 by 80 manufactured home on this property. It's an 8.16 acre parcel that's zoned RE1. Her site plan shows two other homes already on this property. This would be the third dwelling. The mobile home is already there. This is a picture of her mobile home, and these are just surrounding properties.
It's already there?
It's already there.
Didn't we do ordinance in relations to this?
We did. It was moved in violation of the ordinance.
When did it get moved in?
I'm not sure of the exact date this one was moved in. I think it was moved in around the 1st of August or so.
Is that in the process?
Well, that was when we were dealing with the mover on.
It's in process. We've got some work to do on that. But yes, we are moving forward with enforcement of violation of the ordinance. Our ordinance gives us a multitude of options to deal with that. One option that we have is to force that it be removed, taken back to the lot. Another, if it is, to find the, either the homeowner themselves, or the installer, if it's the installer that did it, or the seller, if it's the seller that did it. In this particular case, unless I'm wrong, we're going after the seller. You know, this is not the first rodeo for this seller, and we're asking, or we're allowing the justice court action to hopefully help them understand how to get into compliance with our ordinance. And thankfully, that ordinance allows us some discretion, Jay, and you guys, where if it's very obvious that the homeowner has been taken advantage of, or is completely clueless, we're trying to be careful not to aim our weaponry at the homeowner, or go out to the party that's really responsible for this. And so, with us being able to pursue the seller, we feel like we're going in the right direction.
Correct.
What kind of timeframe are we looking at in terms of justice court? How long does it take for all that to get there?
Yeah, most of those have been pretty quick turnarounds. I've seen trial settings within 45 days after we initially filed the affidavit.
Okay.
Now, that may not be typical.
Yeah.
But in this particular case, it was a pretty fast setting.
Okay.
Most time, it's gonna be the seller or the mover.
Most of them.
In most cases, I mean, they just, because the homeowner usually does no, no idea.
Well, we don't want to say that he doesn't know what's coming up.
No.
Especially if it's, like, in this particular example, I mean, that's the third unit that's on that site. I'm not suggesting that we had our ordinance in place when the prior units were put in, but, you know, we've got enough room in our ordinance to be able to look at each situation, and if it's clear that the homeowner either is involved or should have known, then it allows us to pursue them as well, or individually, whatever.
Okay.
So Renee and I work together, well, these kinds of line, we work together to try to evaluate what's the best way that we can go after the party that's most responsible.
Gotcha. Thank you, Craig.
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
Okay, that property has been posted, and we haven't received any calls on it as well.
Okay.
Next is a conditional use for Timothy and Aura Johnson at 280 Mount Hell Road. They're requesting to place a 2014 16 by 76 manufactured home on the property. It's a 1.037 acre parcel. It's zoned RE1. This lot is a piece of family land that has been divided, and access to the property is on a private road that comes in off of Mount Hell, all the way down to the back. This is her father's home, and then this is the property where she'll be placing the mobile home. If she's approved, I think Craig's gonna prepare a restrictive covenant document for the property owners to sign on the private drive, just stating that it will remain private. Here's her site plan, and this is her piece where she shows her 16 by 76 manufactured home. It's her father's property, and these other parcels to the rear have been divided out of that estate as well. This is just a view of the private road going in off of Mount Hell. This is the father's home. And this is where her mobile home will be placed. That property was posted, and we've not received any calls either.
So there's additional acreage back there?
Yes, sir. That's, was part of that estate that's been divided out.
But that's typical of, with the same kind of thing where we'd have people sign the documents to make sure that that does remain a private drive.
Correct. In, in this particular case, I don't believe, I could be wrong, but I don't think that the private drive actually extends all the way to where the undeveloped additional acreage is, which means that additional access issues could come up later. But right now, we're tending to the parcels that have access on the private drive.
Okay, alright.
Okay, next is a conditional use for CIA Autoplex at 1902 Highway 471. Property is on the east side of 471. It's a 1.87 acre parcel that's zoned C2. This is the, there's an existing building. It's the Mitchell Jones Seafood Country Buffet Building. CIA is just requesting to expand their existing business that's on 471 in Flowood City Limits to this location. They want to expand and grow their business. All of the adjoining properties here is zoned C2. And they propose to place 30 to 50 vehicles for sale on the property and continue with the same hours of operation as they have at their existing location. This is their business, their existing business, and it's in the city of Flowood. The property was posted, and we've had one call in opposition. That's all.
Now, C2, does that allow for?
As a conditional use.
As a conditional use, okay.
Alright, the last item under the review is a rezoning request for Edmund Turnage and Bobby Davis at 3021 Highway 80 East. It's on the north side of Highway 80. It's a 61.72 acre parcel that's zoned RE1. They're proposing to go to I2. They're proposing construction of a 15,000 square foot metal building with an office area of 3,000 square feet, warehouse space, and an open area at the back of the building. This is their site plan, where they come in off of 80. There's a better picture here showing the driveway coming into the property. They're proposing crushed limestone. They do show asphalt parking in front of the building. And then these are the elevations. They show brick on the front and along the office area on each side. The back of the building will be metal. And Mr. Parker has reviewed the drainage plans, and he said it was adequate. This is just the floor plan showing the office area up front, the warehouse area, and open area to the rear. And these are surrounding properties. This is the actual lot. And this property was posted, and we've received one call in opposition to it.
Okay. Is that it on Old Business?
That's all of the Old Business.
You received a call in opposition to it?
I did. Just one. We've had several inquiries, but just one person was opposed.
Hmm. Is that a surrounding?
She was. She was across the highway from the lot.
Alright, new considerations.
Alright, the first one is a conditional use request for Derek Boyd at 680 Highway 469 South. He's requesting to place a 28 by 76 manufactured home on family land. It's a 36 acre parcel that's zoned RE1A. Derek's grandmother and mother own property at the front, and he will, he has an easement to come across their property to get to where the mobile home will be placed. This will be the second dwelling on this parcel of land. There's already one mobile home on this 36 acres. This is a site plan. This is the existing mobile home, and this is where Derek's gonna place his home. This is a picture of the mobile home that's already there. This is his grandmother's home, his mother's house, and then this is the lot where Derek will place the mobile home. He's here. Do you have any questions? This is a property across the street.
Any questions? Okay, do I have a motion to set the public hearing?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Okay, the next item is a conditional use request of Brian Berkeley at 100 Belgrove Boulevard. Brian's requesting a conditional use to operate an upscale daycare center in an existing building at 100 Belgrove Boulevard. It's a .70 acre parcel that's zoned P1. The building used to be a bank. The total heated and cooled square footage of the building is 3,048. This is a picture of the building itself. The health department has been out and inspected, and they determined the maximum capacity is 57 children. And also, the fire department has inspected the building. Those are just pictures of the surrounding properties.
Did everything, as far as the health department, everything?
They have some things they're gonna have to work on and address, but...
Okay, so you've been working well with them as far as our end and everything else to make sure that, to make it go forward?
Yes, sir.
As far as what, okay.
And Scott Sweeney is here, and Ed Torres, if you have any questions for them. Scott is not, wasn't able to attend at 1:00. I mean, Brian, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Much approved.
Got a motion by Mr. Bishop.
Set a public hearing for 9:15.
Right. Got a second by Mr. Morrison, set this public hearing. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Alright, next is a conditional use request for Robert Lloyd on Old Fannin Road. It's a 9.6 acre parcel. This is actually owned by Dr. Brown. Mr. Lloyd is proposing to build a, I mean, to buy 41,000 square feet of a vacant lot. This is it right here. It's being carved out of this larger parcel of land. The property is zoned C2, and he's proposing construction of an upscale express car wash. This is just a site plan. He's just wanting to make sure he can be approved for this use before he does any further drawings. But this is the existing boulevard coming in, or the drive coming in to Mr. Brown's bowling alley back here at the back. He's gonna come in off of Old Fannin and enter the car wash here. This is where you would pay, and then come through. And they're showing one of two exits. You can either exit back out onto the boulevard, or you can come around if you're gonna use the vacuums, and this would be an exit only onto Old Fannin. These are some, just pictures of some existing franchises that they would be doing something compatible to or similar to.
Which, so which one of those compatible to? Because all three of them look a little different.
Well, this is the same building.
Oh, it's the same?
This is the front view.
Okay.
This is where the cars enter, and then this is where they exit.
I got you, okay.
Rich Mason is here, though, representing Mr. Lloyd, if you have any questions.
Where's it gonna be located?
The 1100 block of Old Fannin Road is out in front of Dr. Brown's, the bowling alley is right here. And he's talking about going right here in this area.
And take up that whole dirt area, or just a portion?
It's a 41,000, well, no, it would not be. It's 41,500 square feet. It's just, I'll show you if I go on further.
Okay.
Anyway, these are just pictures of something that it will be similar to. Okay, this is the Fannin Plaza here. This is where you enter. Okay, it's right out here in front of the bowling alley. As far as how much space that would actually take up on there, it won't be a big area. Less than an acre. Acres 43.5, I do believe. And then this is the entrance to Regatta.
43.6. To be exact.
Okay.
When would you propose to start construction on this? What's?
If we get your approval and everything, we're closing on the site on the 1st of November. We'll probably start construction by the end of November.
Right around the time Old Fannin Road would be pretty much complete?
Yes.
Hopefully. Okay.
Our expectation would be to have it operational before 1st of May.
1st of May, okay.
I'll make a motion to set the public hearing.
Got a motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Morrison, and set this public hearing. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Okay, next is a dimensional variance request for Samuel and Chondrell Long at 129 Bryant High Street. They're requesting the dimensional variance for 5.7 feet from the 100-foot minimum lot width requirement. It's a 1.48 acre parcel. It's zoned RE1. This property is part of an estate that has been divided as well. Bryant High actually ends. It circles around and ends, and then it comes on down. This is just private where it comes down to Chondrell's property. This is just a view going in on Bryant High. This is where the road turns back here, and this comes down to Chondrell's property. This is her mother-in-law's home, I believe, and she's granted them an easement in the deed to access their property. This is her mother-in-law's home. And this is the actual property. Just kinda stops, dead ends.
Okay, do I have a motion to set the?
I'll make a motion to set the public hearing for 10:06, 14.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Morrison. Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Okay, the last item under New Business is a conditional use request for Bob and Jeanette Hall at 1015 Fortune Drive, which is located off of Tricklebridge Road. Mr. Hall is requesting a conditional use to place a manufactured home on a two-acre parcel that's zoned RE1. This is family land, and they've retired, and they're just trying to move close to their son. This is his site plan. He's showing a double-wide mobile home, but he said he's not 100% sure that it will be a double-wide. He hasn't bought anything yet. He's waiting to make sure he's approved. This is Fortune Drive, as it comes in off of Tricklebridge. And these are just surrounding properties. The mobile home is gonna go somewhere in this area. And this is the house at the very end.
I'll make a motion to set that public hearing for 10:06, 14.
Motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Mr. Slay.
Afternoon.
Afternoon.
Mr. President, the next item under the Planning Commission agenda is some nuisance hearings. The first is the Michael Arney nuisance property. This is 811 Rushden Circle District 2 property. We'll open that public hearing. I'll ask if Mr. Arney, or anyone to speak on Mr. Arney's behalf, is present.
Yes.
Okay. If you'll step forward, please. Renee, if you'll walk us through the photos.
Alright, we received a complaint in December of '13 in regard to a section of fallen fence and some rubbish and debris. We sent the letter, the certified mail, and it was received. Mr. Arney had called and said that he would get the section of fallen fence. He would take it down, or, and fix the latch where the gate would close, and he would replace the entire fence when he could afford to. We received another complaint in April. These are the new pictures. The grass is tall, still debris, fence down.
Mr. Arney, if Mr. Brown is not present at this time, has, have you been contacted by Mr. Brown about this at all, or have you talked to him?
No. When this arose back December, January, whenever I got the first letter.
Yes, sir.
I spoke to some young lady up at the office, and I told her I was not going to completely replace the fence or put it back up. There's gonna be a last section I'm not gonna replace with new wood. At some point, when I'm able, I will replace the entire fence. But it's gonna go to a certain point, about four feet from the neighbor's fence, that's where it will stop. She was good with that, and I did, as I said. Well, back about a few months later, back around June, I get another one, saying it's, that's not good enough, or whatever. My fence is a nuisance, or whatever. I had done what they asked. Also, my grass needed to be cut, which, it didn't look like a dang vacant house by no means. But it's since been cut, and that's, the fence is just as it was.
What about the, what about the debris? It looks like, doesn't appear that you've taken any of that.
That's just some overgrowth around a stump back there. That stump you see standing is the tree that took out that part of the fence.
Doesn't the fence, it looks like the fence kinda went around that tree at one time. Is that correct?
No.
No, what's, it looks like fence behind.
It went behind this tree you see over here to the left. The tree right through the opening.
Yeah.
Is the tree that failed and destroyed the fence.
Gotcha.
Now, half the fence was laying on the ground.
Oh, I got you.
When they first contacted me, and it did look bad. I put it all back up, except for that last little section of about four feet.
Right, so what your intention is then, is to get that piece, are you gonna take all the debris out and put a new section in that piece, or what do you, what is your?
No, I will, at some point, replace the whole fence, but as I explained to the lady that I spoke to, I'm like, their fence doesn't have to go all the way to the neighbor's fence, does it? No, it doesn't. That's where the fence ends, right there. As far as debris, that's some, just some brush that's laying there.
So how far, what, what kind of length are you talking about as far as putting up new fence?
Oh, probably 50 feet on that side of the house, probably 12, 14 feet on the other side of the house.
I think what you're saying is you didn't wanna replace a section till you could replace it all, and it wouldn't be like a new and old together?
Exactly. And this stems from a neighbor who had sent some word through another neighbor. She didn't like my boat sitting in the driveway. She'd like if I would do something with my boat. It's been a continual problem with her. So she keeps calling me, and it's gotten to the point where I feel like I'm being harassed, and y'all are being used to do that.
Well, some, you know, and, and some of the problem is the debris. I mean, that's where I, I guess, when you, when you have debris, you know, sometimes you have...
I haven't received any correspondence regarding to any debris, just the fence.
Just the fence.
You're talking about just a little, is that just a little?
Right, you're not talking much.
A few little limbs piled up there?
Yeah.
What's the rest of the fence look like? Is this just one little spot we're talking about?
You can't even see this. Down here, way down here, if you look past my mailbox.
Yeah.
Way down there, that's the little section that's gone.
Right. Just a four foot.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it may be five. I don't know. It's not much. But it's down in the corner, under the trees, and it's...
When you're talking about replacing it? I mean, you said down the lot road, you know?
When I'm able. It's, I can't really give you a date. It's just me. I don't have any other income other than mine, and I have to pay the note on that house.
Right.
And everything, so...
The part that, where the, I guess, the debris was, that was around the corner?
It was down...
I mean, it's not, you can't even see it from that picture, can you?
Yeah, yeah, no. I mean, that's way down under the tree.
Yeah, okay.
In fact, that's the limbs that fall out of them trees, and I toss them over the fence in the backyard.
Yeah, okay.
How does our ordinance deal with fences?
Since they should be maintained and in good repair?
It's, it's a maintenance issue and aesthetics issue. With us being complaint-driven, not driving around looking for fences that may be...
Oh, yeah, there's plenty around.
Okay.
There are plenty.
It's, it's complaint-driven, and we address them from a maintenance standpoint. Obviously, if we were eating the dogs, we'd have a problem here, but that's not an issue. It's really an aesthetics issue.
Well, then...
And you do have the option, in this particular case, where you evaluate, if you see the photos, you, you understand more about the issues that are at play here, that there's no rule that says that you have to declare anything to be a nuisance. You just simply close the hearing and move on. If you find that there is justification for a nuisance, then obviously, we should act on that, but it really comes down to your decision as to what you're seeing, what you see here.
Right, okay.
Well, I would say pick up the limbs, get rid of opportunities for somebody to complain about you, and, and try to keep the fence up.
Yeah, I mean, nothing says the fence has to be a new fence in our ordinance. I mean, in, in, to me.
No.
I might like the weathered look.
What is that behind there?
Behind the, or?
That blue. What is that?
That's right there.
There's like little, on the left, right there. What is that?
That's a windshield or a roof.
Okay.
Okay.
How do you have it back there? Is that the front of it?
That's the back of it. It's backed up to the fence over there.
Okay.
Okay, is there any more questions?
No.
Can I close the public hearing? All right. Whichever action we need to take. All right, pleasure of the board.
I'd like to both just close it, move on.
Got a motion by Mr. Morrison to close the public hearing. I mean, close it as not a nuisance.
I mean, to me, if you just clean a little pile of limbs up where somebody won't complain about that.
I may not do that when I get around there cleaning. That's not a problem, but what I've been notified of is the fence. That's what I've been getting mail about, so...
Yeah, no, I'm saying so they won't come back up about, well, now we got limbs piled up.
Right, oh, yeah, that's not a problem. That's not a problem.
If you do that, let's just move on.
But, uh, in reference, like I said, I'm being harassed. You're gonna hear more out of it. Is there some way, something can be put on my file that when this, you know, what calls again? Because it's not the only problem she's caused me.
It will be in the records, no matter what.
Yeah, it'll be in the record now.
All right, so I've, I've motioned by Mr.
Thank you for coming.
I've motioned by Mr. Morrison.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Mr. President, the next item is the James Waltoney nuisance property at 145 Valley Cove. This is a District 3 property. We'll open that public hearing. It's Mr. Waltoney here. Mr. President, I don't see anyone answering for that. Renee, if you'll walk us through the photos.
Okay, we received a complaint in March of 14. We've worked this property several times before. The complaint was in regard to rubbish, debris, inoperable vehicles. These pictures were taken in March. And these are the new pictures that were taken yesterday.
All right, you can close the public hearing.
All right, the, the certified mail, the first letter was unclaimed, but the second letter was received.
We'll close that hearing.
Make a motion. We declare this a public nuisance.
Second.
Motion by myself, second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Mr. President, the next item is the Christie Wyatt nuisance property, 149 Sunny Lane, another District 3 property. Is Ms. Wyatt present?
We don't have it on here.
Second page.
Second page.
Oh, yeah, two pages.
We done moved on to two pages now.
Yeah, good grief.
Renee, if you'll show us those photos, please.
All right, we received a complaint in March on this property. We've worked it before as well. Uh, these pictures were actually taken in March. And these are the new pictures taken yesterday. The certified mail was unclaimed.
Where's Sunny Lane?
Rolling.
Rolling Hills.
Rolling Hills. Now, when you claim, whenever it was unclaimed, so is there someone living there, or do we know?
I believe it's vacant.
Okay.
The, the mail would have been sent to the last known address of who is reflected as the owner of the property, so...
So what's our option on, I know there's several different options I guess we can take.
Declare the nuisance and allow the justice court to take the process and get service of process and move forward in that fashion.
We'll close that public hearing.
Make a motion that we declare this a nuisance.
Second.
Motion by myself, second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Next item is the April McKenna nuisance property at 289 Fay Drive, District 3. We'll open that public hearing. Is Ms. McKenna present? Mr. President, I don't see anyone answering. Renee, if you'll show us.
All right, these pictures were taken in March. We'd received a complaint. We've worked this proper, property previously in the past. It's vacant now, though. A call was, we received a call in regard to rubbish, debris, grass, abandoned mobile home with the windows broken out. And this is a Robin Hood.
And you said that they have received, or they did not respond?
The mail was returned unclaimed, but I, I think it's vacant that they've, um...
Is they own it, or is it a rental?
They owned it.
The ones that, okay, the original ones owned it?
The ones we, the same people own it as when we worked it previously for a nuisance. These pictures were taken yesterday. The property's grown up.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a mess.
We can close that.
We'll close the public hearing. Be appropriate, take action.
Make a motion. We declare it a nuisance.
Second.
Got a motion by myself, second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Next item is the Digger Blue nuisance property, date 33 Holly Bush Road, District 4. Don't see anyone responding. Renee?
Okay, we've received several complaints on this property off of Holly Bush Road. It appears that a vehicle or something ran through the house. We have a tarp over it.
Is that looking in the front door?
I think that's the...
The picture back.
Well, it is now.
No, I mean, no, I mean, flip back, right there.
This is the front, and this is the garage.
I know, but it looks like almost you see in the door window there, like something went all the way into there. Wow, okay.
We've sent the certified letters, but they've both come back, returned unclaimed.
Is it vacant?
Well, we think it's prob, we, well, we thought it was vacant. There's a car there. These are the new pictures.
Oh, wow.
Right now, there's a car there in these new pictures.
They're just living in the back section.
The roof is damaged, but if you look at this picture, it looks like there's just stuff, you know, stored.
Something like storage.
Storage unit.
Uh-huh. Wow.
This is boarded up, a door. It's a fairly new home, I believe. But it also appears that with the rain, somebody's cutting the grass, or, or it would be worse this time of year, so...
True, somebody's around somewhere.
Somebody's around.
They're just trying to make two-car garage.
Okay, need to close that public hearing.
Yes, be appropriate, take action.
I'm gonna make a motion to declare it a nuisance.
Second, motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Next item is the David Reed nuisance property, 108 McKay's Place, District 4 property. We'll open that public hearing. Mr. Reed? Mr. President, I don't see Mr. Reed present. Renee, if you'll...
All right, we've received several complaints on this property. They say that Mr. Reed cleans up foreclosed properties and brings the things back to his property and just dumps them. These pictures were taken in February. Now, Mr. Reed signed for the first letter, but the second notice to come to the hearing was returned unclaimed. These are the new pictures. There hasn't been any change in the property, other than the grass has grown up and it's harder to see.
We'll close that public hearing.
Make a motion to declare it a nuisance.
Motion by Mr. Johnson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Mr. President, the next item is the Lori Rhodes and Albert Stevens, 134 Whitesworth Road nuisance properties, District 4. Is Ms. Rhodes or Mr. Stevens present? You'll come forward. Renee, show us photos.
All right, this is actually a 16th section lease property. These pictures were taken in February. We've received multiple complaints. We originally brought it to a previous hearing, and we had the wrong property owner, the wrong parcel. It was the man who lived next door. He gave us the name of Albert Stevens and said he was a relative, and he was living here on the property. He hasn't resigned for, signed for any of the mail that was sent. Ms. Rhodes is listed as the, I guess, the lease owner, holder.
That's correct.
All right, and she received the mail, but these are pictures that were taken in February. And these are the new pictures from yesterday.
Ms. Rhodes, do you live there, or you just?
I do not.
Okay, so you rent?
Well, yes, I inherited the property from my father when he deceased.
Uh-huh.
And got tenants in there in 2012.
Okay.
With the option for them to purchase the house.
Correct.
Uh, I think it was the end of June, my attorney contacted me, said that they were ready to proceed with the quick sale. So he proceeded with getting the paperwork together and everything. End of July, first of August, I went to his, his office, signed the paperwork. Right now, as of yesterday, he said that we're just waiting on them to respond to the quick sale paperwork. Unfortunately, he's tried to contact them for the past three weeks with no response to whatsoever. Which, we don't know. We have four different phone numbers for them. One's disconnected. Three other ones, they're not answering any kind of phone calls whatsoever and have not returned his phone calls. So we really don't know what the issue is with the tenants as of now. The notices, the notice that was sent out for this hearing was actually sent to a wrong address, over in Blowwood. Actually, it's a family member's home. They got it. I actually just got the notice earlier this week. And actually drove by the property for the first time in several months today, and actually saw.
What you, what we're looking at?
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Do they live there now?
Uh, as far as I know, when I drove by this morning, there are vehicles in, in the yard, and it looks like, you know, people reside there.
Are they paying you rent?
Uh, they were up until the end of, um, June and have not received anything since then. That's why we had proceeded with the quick sale, for us to do the quick sale, but as of now, I have no, no answer on that. My attorney still working on trying to get in touch with him. But he did inform me that if we don't have any response by the end of this month, the quick sale paperwork's gonna be no longer valid and that my only option will be, you know, eviction.
Correct.
Start, you know, eviction processes.
Typically, on, Craig, I know that's kind of a long shot on that. What typically on that, on eviction, if they do have to go that route, what, what kind of timeframe we're looking at?
Depends on what sort of response is made by the tenants under that circumstances. They haven't, they would have about the tenant to respond. But typically, and you can give an eviction proceeding initiated and through the court system, if you're just looking for possession of the property, you can do that in about 15 days.
Okay.
Uh, if I could make a suggestion.
Yes, sir.
On the situation that's been described here, I would suggest that we put it off 30 days, maybe.
Right.
Allow, allow for the process to proceed.
Correct.
Ms. Rhodes can give Renee and John an accurate address.
Accurate, yes.
Say the communication, the phone number, and then that will allow us to reassess in 30 days to see if there's any potential movement on this sale, which obviously would transfer type of possession over to someone else.
Yeah, but if it does...
If the quick sale doesn't take place, and she goes through the eviction process, when the constable goes out there to evict the, the people that are living there, will they not only move their stuff out of the house, but will they clean up any of that debris in the yard?
Well, I doubt very seriously that the constable is gonna get into...
Good luck.
Who owns the stuff in the yard, because I suspect their first comment is gonna be, well, that's not my stuff.
Yeah, if you were them, would you? The burden's gonna fall back on you, I'm sorry.
Right, so I, yeah, I mean, I understand that if I have to go through eviction processes, I would be responsible for the cleanup where they left behind.
Okay, well, let's, let's close that.
If you sell it, then they're gonna have to do some cleaning up quick.
Exactly.
Right.
And it just breaks my heart, because that was my father's property.
Yes, ma'am. Well, let's close that public hearing, and I agree with what the, what our attorney is saying. Of course, this is District 4.
I agree. Make a motion just to extend it to the third day.
Okay, got a motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Morrison. Any more questions?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Good luck.
Good luck, and if you will get with Ms. Renee, and let's get some good information, and that way we can reassess this in about 30 days, and hopefully everything kind of work through. No matter what, we'll work with you.
Thank you.
I understand the problems.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for coming today.
Mr. President, the next item is the Harvey Spence Jr. nuisance property at 895 East Harbor Street. This is District 1. This time, we'll open that public hearing. Mr. Spence or someone on his behalf. Renee, if you'll...
This is just a review. He was coming back from the July 3rd nuisance property hearing. He was to tear down the old home on the property. These pictures were taken in July. And these are the new pictures. He took care of it and got it taken down.
That's the new pictures.
Mm-hmm.
Good job.
You ain't kidding. Man, you are, we, we need to get a photo of all that, Chuck. We need to, that's the...
That's what you looking at.
I'm talking about in the picture. I'm talking about in the newspaper.
That was the current photos.
Talking about in the newspaper.
We appreciate, I appreciate you doing what you said.
Well, yes, uh, that was my wife and I first home, when we first got married, back in '60, we built that house, and she passed. So, so the house that put the rest took.
Well, we appreciate your, honestly, that, that's, I know that's kind of tough, but I guarantee, we, we appreciate all your efforts and everything you've done to make that, uh...
You been down to gym lately?
Yes, I go every day.
This dedicated gym workout guy right here, dedicated. Yeah, good to see you again.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Spence.
Thank you a lot.
So we closed, did we, we didn't close the public hearing?
Yeah, it was just review. We do, but we left the hearing open from previously, so the records are clear. We close that public hearing. May no need for action.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Slay. Is that all of that part? Okay, so we have a site plan, architectural review?
None today.
None today. Okay, the next meeting will be held on Monday, September 29th at nine o'clock.
Make a motion. We adjourn till the end.
Motion by Mr. Bishop to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Okay, at this time, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Rankin County Board of Supervisors Work Session. Attendees, we've got Pearl Public School, Richard Smith Art, and Brian Jones.
Thank y'all for being here.
Yeah, they probably expected to be gone by now. Yeah, I'm sure. Come on up. I forgot we had that actually, or I told you.
Thank y'all for letting us come today.
Thank you.
And, uh, hope to see y'all at the game tomorrow night.
Heck, yes.
Hope you're pulling for the Pirates.
Well, I would say I would be, but I'm for Fran and so...
I'll be a good game. Have a good time. And my wife wants to request a Dollar General build at Airport Road between Muskellies and... Anyway, we've come today to ask, ask your assistance on a project our baseball team has going on. This is Brian Jones. He's our head baseball coach. We're also both members of the Diamond Club, and this is, we're coming on behalf of the Diamond Club. We, uh, we're in the process of, well, we have plans to build, I guess I could bring it up there and let you, if y'all want to look at it, a heating facility for our baseball team. And it's gonna go out for bids here in the next couple of weeks. Our district has approved bid process for this, uh, heating facility.
Is the Diamond, is the Diamond Club a 501?
Yes, 501(c)(3). Yes. And the Diamond Club's making a, kind of went in and made a great with the school district. Basically, they're gonna pay 41,000 of whatever the initial, whatever the cost turns out to be for this facility. We're anticipating it being somewhere between 100 and 120,000 dollars. But the Diamond Club is committed to paying 40,000 dollars of that, and the district's gonna pay the rest of it. And we can anticipate this to be construction starting in November and completed by the first of baseball season, which is February the 1st. first of baseball season, which is February the first. And it's our understanding that you gentlemen have access to some revenue that you can help organizations with, and we've come to ask your assistance as a Diamond Club to help them have some revenue to pay the district this forty thousand dollars, at least help us get started on paying that forty thousand dollars back. And the agreement was to pay ten thousand a year for four years, right to the district.
On this rendering, on this rendering for, is this chain link, or is this the, is this netting?
That'll be a-
Chain link covered by the netting.
With a windscreen.
Windscreen, man.
Good, okay, yeah, 'cause I've seen you, you know what I'm talking about, so they-
And if you've ever been down Pirate Cove and saw a binding cage, it could have been on the nuisance list, y'all just ask.
You were worried about that one, didn't you, yours?
The nuisance, yeah, I was like, we might be in the nuisance.
We were, yeah, we were kind of waiting on that, but-
I understand.
Anyway, this is something the baseball pro has been wanting for a long, long, long time. I know a couple of years ago, I think some of you guys helped Brandon with this and the facility they built, which is really nice, and this, we did go and look at theirs in Germantown, Madison Central's been around, and kind of with Coach Jones-
So you're trying to get an upscale to at least what Brandon is, is that what you're saying?
We think that this is gonna look better than Brandon's.
I understand.
That's, that's our, that's our goal, that it's gonna look better than Brandon's.
Next time.
Yeah. But anyway, we would really like your consideration in this, and think it'd be a good thing for our kids and our school district community.
And I heard the, I heard the dates, so we can actually put this off into 2015 budget year, it sounds like. Is that correct? Unless you, unless, unless you have some money left.
I do.
You do?
Yeah.
That's wonderful.
How do they need to word the, the request?
Making a quest, request?
That's all?
Plus they have-
From the Diamond Club?
Well, there's some certain, just a little bit of stuff that he does.
I think they provided the, the mock-up of what they're intending to do.
Exactly.
Three quotes.
Need a couple quotes.
Yeah, quote, one, two quotes.
Couple quotes.
Yeah, we'll get that, then, I guess we'll get that when the bid come in.
And the bids come in when?
I think the architect, when he left yesterday, my understanding was that it would probably in September and close somewhere toward the end, they were hoping toward the end of September, so we'd go ahead and get construction started.
If there's any possibility, we need it before September 15th board meeting, so we can actually get it on those minutes.
The two bid, or the bids?
Yes, at least.
You'll have to, you'll have to have it.
The two quotes, the last one?
That's our last meeting before the first of October meeting.
This budget year.
I'll have to call, I'll call our architect and see what he says. We'll do our, definitely do our best to-
Well, I mean, and that's the thing, I mean, it can be as close as possible, so it's got to do, because we've got to do this for, you know, for legality, I mean-
It's kind of being this year's budget year.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
Correct. For him, for us to be able to give that money to you this year.
Especially by email or phone, and I'll give you a couple of thoughts on what we need.
Okay, all right.
That way you won't have to remember anything.
I got you.
You'll give him his plans back?
Yeah.
Greg, Greg will give you plans back.
Well, yeah, you, I was looking to see if I can keep that for Brandon, since she was gonna be better, but.
No.
I appreciate y'all coming forth, and-
Thank you.
This is really kind of the first time that we've had a formal presentation like that, but I appreciate what y'all did.
We were, we did not know this, it was gonna be like.
We were a little, yeah, we-
That's okay, y'all.
We were a little shell shocked.
That's okay, y'all. Y'all set, y'all set the standard, so now, I'm gonna have to look at my other guys now and see what's up, so. Good luck tomorrow night.
All right, Wednesday, appreciate it.
Thank y'all.
Y'all take care. All right. This time I have Mr. Craig Slade, Board Attorney.
Mr. President, if I may, I'm gonna direct your attention to the agenda for September II, under my section, and you'll see, under my section, on the September II agenda, a reference to a preliminary review and consideration of Denali Water Solutions' request for a preliminary determination of need.
Yeah.
As a part of its request, you see that, if I may, Mr. President, I would appreciate the board's consideration of adding that item to the work session agenda.
Okay.
The reason is that your board attorney got confused about when he told the attorney who is handling this matter to be here with the proponent of this request, and so we have the representatives of Denali Water Solutions here from, I believe, Arkansas. Is that right, Mr. Cook?
Yes, sir.
And in order to keep Mr. Cook from making two trips to Rankin County from Arkansas-
Well, you can put him up over, you know, motel.
I would really appreciate the board's consideration of moving that item to today. If I can briefly explain what that item is requesting, it is not a public hearing of any kind, it's not, it's not, it's not conducting a public hearing, and you are not making any decision as it relates to a final decision by entertaining this action. You are going to hear more about what the proposal is, and then you will be asked to consider a resolution that would determine that this board sees the opportunity to update or upgrade its solid waste men, uh, plan by way of amendment, and then that allows for a public comment period and a later public hearing.
Okay.
On the matter. So in order to accommodate Mr. Cook and not, not require two trips, I would ask that y'all allow us to move that to the work session agenda.
Okay, do I have the motion to add that?
I'm about to motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Bishop to add this item to the agenda. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm gonna ask Chris Palmer, who is the attorney who's been assigned by the board to handle our amendment to the solid waste plan, to come forward. He'll explain what the, what the request is, a little bit about the process that we're gonna go through, and then if you need to hear from Mr. Cook, he's here.
Okay, thank you, Craig.
Good afternoon, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Evening.
Good evening, yeah.
All right, the, the process that we're going through here is, the solid waste management plan that Rankin County has was adopted in, I believe, nineteen ninety-four, recently updated in 2011, and it operates, in essence, sort of like a zoning ordinance. It's fixed what you can and can't do, if somebody wants to do something that's not specifically allowed in there, they have to come and ask the board for an amendment to the solid waste management plan. Well, just about all of solid waste management is also governed by MDEQ and their multitude of regulations. MDEQ has a long process by which an applicant can come up with the idea that they need an amendment and ultimately be able to do what they want to do. We are in the very, very early stages of that, and what I mean by that is, in order to ultimately get permitted by the MDEQ to, for example, and Denali Water Solutions wants to apply bio-waste solids on farmers' fields, access fertilizer, they can't do that unless the county allows an amendment to the waste management plan to allow them to proceed and do that. Then they have to go through the long process of being permitted by MDEQ. So the county doesn't have the final say on this, this, the county is actually the first step in a long process for these guys to get to do what they want to do. So what we're here on today is, the, the Denali Water Solutions filed an application to amend the solid waste management plan on October 1st, and in that application, they have set out what they want to do, and that is to take bio-waste solids and apply them on certain farmers' fields that have been identified in detail, their maps and so forth attached to the waste man, to the application. The process leads us to here, and that is that the board has to take a look at the application and determine at this stage whether or not you should just say, "No, we don't want it, go back to Arkansas," or we find after just taking a brief look at it, that we're gonna allow this process to go on and have a public comment period, and then a public hearing where a final decision will be made. So this is more or less just a preliminary review and preliminary consideration, and the board has to determine for it to go forward, that there is a need for the amendment or for the waste management procedures that Denali is wanting to do. So Mike Cook from Denali Water Solutions is here, from Arkansas, to answer any questions you guys may have, he can explain the process, and, and at the conclusion of that, the board will need to make a decision, or has option to make a decision, whether just to shut it down and deny the application on the spot, or allow it to go forward, solicit public comments, and set a public hearing, and if the board decides to do that, we have a resolution prepared that would set the public hearing on the November 3rd regular board meeting, okay? So I'll let Mr. Cook come up here and-
Before you leave the mic-
Yes, sir.
I think there are similar operations that use a waste byproduct and do whatever-
Right.
-the process is, and then inject it in the ground to use as fertilizer, is this not a similar application?
It is similar, and Mr. Cook can speak to that, but my understanding is that the, the, back in, I believe, 2008, 2009, the board approved an amendment where another company was taking wastewater from the chicken plants, very smelly stuff, very foul, and they would inject it into the farmers' fields, and farmers love it, it's, it's great for the fields, and that's been going on now for a number of years, and they had, they had already been permitted prior to that. What Denali is doing is something different, they're taking bio-waste solids from like the Savannah Street wastewater treatment plant in Jackson. It's not a liquid chicken sludge, I mean, it's, it's a solid material, and it, my understanding is that it's not like the chicken sludge in the sense that you can't smell it from five miles away, it's, they spread it on the field and then disc it within a certain period of time, and, and those, how it's applied, the quantity, the makeup of it, and the mechanism of distribution is all governed by MDEQ. Despite anything that the board does, even if it ultimately approves it, if MDEQ doesn't allow it, it's not gonna happen.
You know, and I guess that's one question I was gonna ask you, and I know this is probably way crazy, but it seems like it's almost in reverse. Why wouldn't you have MDEQ approve something before it comes to us, and say and give the blessing before it even comes to us? Because if they disapprove it, it doesn't matter what we do.
That's correct. Greg, the, the MDEQ has a whole booklet, Solid Waste Management Guidance, that local entities, counties, have to follow. I have no idea why it's the way it is, but that's the way it is, and we have to, we have to go through this process at this level, and then these guys have to go through that long, multi-step process, and they may ultimately get rejected by MDEQ at the end of the line.
If I could just throw an analogy in there, you mentioned that if this is similar to a zoning context?
Right.
It would be similar to somebody going to Renee and asking for a construction permit, and the first question that needs to be asked is, can you even put it there?
Right.
The DEQ, I don't think they're going to open a file and spend a lot of time and effort and energy evaluating the process until they know that the county will in fact permit it to happen. I suspect that that's why it is the way it is.
Gotcha.
It sounds like that, even though you might think there's similar applications, the, the chicken byproduct is actually injected, and in all defense of, of that application method, once they got the injection process perfected and got it deep enough, I don't think it had the same effects as it did at first. You're right, at first it was a, it was a nightmare, but-
I remember that.
And so this material would be broadcast on top of the ground?
Yes, sir, that, that's my understanding, Mr. Cook explained that it, it's, it's surface broadcast, cast, and then disc to under, there may be other techniques as well, but I know it has to be, something has to be done with it, it doesn't just sit on top of the surface.
Right.
And they're required to do that within a certain period of time.
So many hours.
Right, so many hours.
Okay.
You put that very well.
Yes, sir, that'd be great.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Is this part of the original company that came in with the chickens?
This company, we sold, yeah, it used to be the same company, and the company that does the chicken sludge, we sold that part of the company to Darling International about a year ago.
Okay.
And they wanted to keep the name, so we had to change our name to Denali Water Solutions.
Okay, so it is two totally separate entities now, no connection?
And, and we only deal with municipal treated sewage sludge type things, and water treatment sludges and that sort of thing, and they only deal with industrial, like the animal stuff.
Yeah. How do you go about selecting, I assume you're getting some contractors to put it out? How are you doing that?
No, sir, we do that.
Your company, Denali, does it itself?
Yes, yes, sir.
So there won't be an opportunity for someone to do some work out of this?
Well, yes, there would, we, we hire our contract drivers, and we hire farm equipment operators and that sort of thing, but we, we're responsible for it, so we manage it in the field every day, so that guy, whoever's running the operation, has to be one of our employees. And a lot of times, like on a farm, we'll have a guy who works out there on a certain farm, and we're, we're gonna be spread around the county, we've talked to, we have five landowners that wanna be involved in this, from Hila Hachi to Florence to down south to Brandon. And we allow them to participate, and then we hire drivers, and we buy our fuel locally.
So when you, when you, I guess to say what Jay is saying, so we could end up with some employees from Rankin County, basically Rankin County employees?
Oh, yes, sir, I, I sort of misspoke about that. We are ultimately responsible, so our manager in the field is gonna be one of our guys, but everybody else, I don't know.
That's on the ground.
You'll have your employees broadcasting out, and the landowner possibly could disc it in?
Possibly, or we can hire somebody from here to disc it in.
But you, no matter what, what if it, the content, the level of the soil, if it isn't where they need to be, are y'all gonna be responsible for putting lime out, or?
We work with the farmers on that, but there is a pH requirement, we have to be at six point oh or better.
Mm-hmm.
And there's a lot of other restrictions on it, we have to have setbacks from roads and homes and streams and creeks and ponds.
Right.
And all that sort of thing.
Are those regulatory regs?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so, so the regulatory component of this really falls in DEQ's lap?
Right.
And who monitors that? Other?
MDEQ does.
I mean, they continually monitor?
Oh, no.
On the period?
No, they inspect it and enforce any action against us if we don't follow the rules. We, that's why we have our own manager there. Before he goes out to a field, he will know, I'll provide him with application rates for every field, and they'll be a little bit different depending on what's growing on the field, and how big your field is and all that, what pH is, that sort of thing. And then where his buffer zones have to be, and he'll see that he has a public road over here, so he has to go and flag off 250 feet from that road, 250 feet from this creek over here and this drainage, and our guy will do all that, and then we'll go and spread it at the, at the prescribed rate, and then we'll come back in and incorporate it.
You, you can also use an aerator also, can't you?
Yes, sir, if it's a, if it meets MDEQ's approval.
Right.
We can't use them.
I mean, you're using it now some, aren't you? Aerators?
Not in Mississippi, we have, we're not doing anything in Mississippi right now, but I think the city of Jackson is doing it with an aerator.
But you're using, they're using aerators, yeah?
Right.
I knew, I thought so.
You can't just take like a, a light airway machine or something like that, it has to actually chop the soil up a little bit.
Are you restricted on what kind of crops it can be applied to, or applied for?
Yes, sir. No kind of crops for direct human consumption, vegetable bargains.
I didn't want to say that, but.
That's what it, basically it, we can put it on pastures and corn, soybean fields, cotton.
Does livestock have to be off the pasture so long before it could be marketed?
Thirty days. No, it has to be, the livestock has to be kept off the field for thirty days after we apply on it.
After you apply, okay.
Right.
Can I ask a couple more questions?
Yes, sir.
The, the material itself is waste treatment, it's, but it is treated material, so first and foremost, it's, it's not something that, if there was anything hazardous about it, y'all wouldn't be able to take possession of it at the first point.
That's correct.
So it's gotta be treated. If you know what ultimately is going to happen to that material that is at the treatment facility, if somebody like Denali didn't take it for the process and use it for fertilizer, what would ultimately happen to that material anyway?
In most cases, landfill.
Okay, so it's going to end up in a landfill regardless. So this is a, a process that leads ultimately to a reduction of landfill, potentially landfill materials, if, if, if this process were allowed to go forward. So the further that y'all are able to move and use this, where else besides Mississippi is this process ongoing right now?
It's, it's ongoing everywhere in the country. We do it, we operate from the east coast to the west coast, all the way across the south, and have been for many years. But there's lots of other companies like us out there that do the same thing.
How long, if you know, how long has this process been ongoing in the United States?
Since the 70s.
So it's basically a recycling, almost type of, type of recycling?
Yes, sir. The, the materials or the sludges that come out of these wastewater plants have a lot of plant available nutrients in it. And if they meet all the requirements, they're tested for everything under the sun, everything you can imagine is tested on them. And if they meet all those, then you can land apply it. And it's regulated at a federal level and a state level. And the states that regulate it have to do so more stringently than the federal regs, or they can't do it. So, and every state, permit requirements are different, but they have to be at least as stringent as the feds. So then we, we take the materials and we apply it on farmland, and the way we look at it is, farmers love it. You know, it's, it's really good benefit to them. They, it's good fertilizer. It saves them a lot of money. It provides some jobs for their guys, for other guys in the county, and it keeps it out of landfills, so.
Are there any other counties in Mississippi that are doing this right now?
I think there are two. There are two cities that have permits besides Jackson, two other cities. But as far as private contractors that do it, I don't think there are any. And the reason for that is that MDEQ, MDEQ is tough. It's very difficult to get a permit.
Right.
But our intention is to get permits. We have, we have one in for Yazzin County right now. And then we're going to do Rankin County, and then we'll probably go up around Starkville and try to do the same thing. And the permits last for 10 years. And the long-term goal is that any, any town within a reasonable distance from there will have an option to take it to a permitted site, take it to a landfill.
And it, and it's true, I sat in on a meeting with you, I believe, several months ago. But, and it's true, you can't, Mississippi is one of the states that won't allow you to stop pilot.
That's correct.
Like it's field, you have to go ahead and apply it, and you have, what, four or six hours to have it covered?
Six hours.
Six.
Six hours.
Yeah. In that meeting, though, I think it was discussed, because it was a question of being able to incorporate it and how it would be limited use because of options to use it if it was not able to be aerated in the ground because so much pasture land. And I thought in that same meeting, we, it was said then that they were, there was a company that was using aerators now.
Well, that would be the company that's doing it for the city of Jackson.
Right, but they are using aerators, yes.
Yes, sir.
Because I know it would be limited, would limit you where you could apply it because we have so much pasture land. Nobody wants to run plow across it.
Yeah, I would think, I think probably 90, or more than 90% of the land that we, we have signed up in Rankin County is pasture.
Yeah, right.
And we really like it on pastures, and so do the farmers. It works really well. But you can't disc it.
Right. And it also, the texture, I know you can't, we had a hard time understanding the exactly what the material was going to be like, but it was, it's not a, it's more dense than you first would think. By the time y'all take the, it goes through the process before you can ever put it out.
Yes, sir.
It's, it's not a powder, but it's not a, it's not a liquid.
That's correct. It's not dry. We, we dewater it.
Right.
But it still has a lot of moisture in it.
Right.
And we, those handouts that I gave you guys, that's the same ones that we did back in February. You can see it flying out of the back of them.
It's a particular spreader, yeah.
Right. So that's how it's applied. It can be land applied as a liquid directly, but we, we normally don't. We normally dewater it on site and then haul it to the dryer material.
And you all, actually, far as the cost to the farmer, there is nothing, because you all come in and set the, set mark of where the boundaries and everything, and actually it's, it's not really a cost to him at all. And in some cases, y'all were, had agreed, I think, to hire the landowner to incorporate it in?
Yes, sir. We usually do that.
Right, but there's some options.
Because they'll have their own equipment on site.
Right.
And so we'll hire.
But if not, you could, you would provide the equipment and the manpower to incorporate it in, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yes, sir, we would. And there is no charge to the farmer.
The biggest question that I've heard, and I think it came up lightly here, is the pH. How will you do, how will that work? I mean, how will you, if, if a farmer is a qualified, or say wants to sign up for it, but his pH level is low, who's going to, how's that going to work?
We would work with him. It has to be adjusted.
Right.
One way or another, whether he does it totally or we do it. So somewhere in the middle.
Okay, if you do it, then it's going to be called, I mean, either way, that's where the farmer's, I'm trying to get at, that's where the farmer's going to have a cost, correct?
Yes, sir.
Right, that's what I want to make clear, because it, first it sounded like it's no cost, but the pH level would be where the cost to farmer would be.
Does the five farms you have lined up, are they aware of this?
Yes, sir, they are.
Yes, the ones, some of the ones I know of are, I don't know about all of them.
That they will have the cost incurred?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That's the first thing they ask me.
How much is it going to cost them?
For the, for the liming in it. Are we going to pay for the liming or they?
Yeah.
And it's like, we'll have two farms, and one of them has a pH of seven, and one has a pH of five. We can go right to the one that has a pH of seven. And we, we have a lot of farms scattered out, so we can, you know, if this landowner wants it, and it's economical for us to pay for the lime to go on that farm and use it, then we will. So it's.
How often can you apply?
You have to follow the crop management plan and nutrient management for the field. Usually it's, it's one application, or you have, you can reach the nutrient limit one time per year, and then the crop is harvested, and then you can come back and do it again.
Is it, I, I don't know if there are, is there a certain, any particular time of the year that cannot be applied?
On some fields, actually, to answer your question directly, no. You can land apply anytime, if the weather is good.
Right, ground.
And the ground is good.
Right, right.
But a lot of soil types are located, they get wet during the wintertime.
Right.
And it's pretty common in Mississippi to be off those fields for six months. So.
Depends on soil texture?
Yes, sir, and, and the soil moisture.
Right.
The groundwater table.
Yeah.
If it's a lower-lying area, then we would likely not be able to apply on that, except during the summer, the dry months.
Because, you know, we got a lot of, we have some mixed land in Rankin County as far as some heavy soils and some real sandy, some of the heavy are clay-based. Does that make a difference with, with it being sandy or clay-based? You got a lot of prairie dirt up in the northern area.
It, the soil cannot be sugar sand. It can't be that permeable. If stuff can move through it that fast, then MDEQ won't allow it.
Okay. But, so they helped determine that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, that, that was, okay, good.
Any more questions? Okay. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you.
Honestly, I've not had anyone have any opposition against it. Everyone I've talked to or has heard about it, has asked me about it, has been really interested in.
Positive.
Yeah. I've not had any negative feedback against it.
Hope it stays that way.
Appreciate you.
Thank you, sir.
Well, I need to be here on next Tuesday, or?
Nah, I don't.
We're finna find out.
We fix to find out right quick.
Ask them if, if we can go ahead and, what, based on what you've heard, and again, just to remind you, we are not, you are not approving anything today. You are setting a public comment period. You're adopting a resolution that sets a public comment period. That gives everybody in the public an opportunity to learn about it, study about it. Materials will in fact have to be kept up here, so that if anybody wants to find out what's going on, they can come and review the material. They'll have an opportunity to make a comment about the proposal, and then they will be notified by way of publication that a public hearing on their application will be held November 3. So.
You're not actually talking about reviewing the physical material, are you?
Uh, no, sir. No, sir. The written material.
Yeah, just want to clarify.
That would be the attorney's job.
But you're going to be giving them enough.
Add that item to the agenda to set the hearing?
We just, we just added it for the purpose.
We've already done it.
Yes, sir.
Hey, I got, I have.
Now we would need.
One other question for him for you. This is a question I think a lot of people ask. Clarify a little bit on the odor, because I know you said it's way less than the chicken fertilizer in the meeting that I was in.
Yes, sir, it is. The stuff, what we have available right now is at Savannah Street, and it really doesn't have very much odor at all.
Well, once, once it goes through that process, or y'all got it under those big bubbles, I guess, it takes a lot of methane.
Their stuff don't stink.
It's a subjective thing. Sometimes some, some plants don't treat it the same way, and it does.
Yeah.
Mr. Bishop, we're still in.
I can't.
Okay, that just one, because I know this question gets asked a lot. Okay, all right, thank you.
Appreciate the information.
Jay, thank you. Now I can't get control.
Thank you, Jay.
All right. So where we are now is that the, the matter of discussion that we just had was added to the agenda, but it would be appropriate for someone to move, to adopt the resolution to, to set the comment period and to set the public hearing for November 3 and authorize the publication.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions? Jay, you got any? Okay, all in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Boy, the room is getting emptier and emptier.
Well, they wish we'd hurried up.
Working hard.
Now we got, I guess you're going back to A?
Yes, sir, that's correct. Item A is the, is a little bit of a clarification that we need. This is on a matter typically when we come out of planning commission, you guys have set a, you've, you've set a hearing on a rezoning request, and you authorize publication. This is nothing more than cleaning up a clerical issue that was in the record to reflect that that matter, this matter that's listed here, the Turnage Davis rezoning request, that you've set that public hearing for the second. We did that in the planning commission. This is just clarifying on the record that the hearing is set for the second. That's all we're doing. Just need a motion to adopt item A.
Make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Mr. President, item B is a discussion and potential action to authorize Engineering Service, Inc. to provide engineering services that are required by the code section that's referenced there in the planning and construction of the Walter Volunteer Fire Department, the substation that's going to be located at the intersection of Shiloh Road and John Shiloh Road. You'll permit me, when we get back. I'm going to tell you what I know. Johnny may be needed, necessary at some point to explain further details than I can give you. As you know, the board has already approved the placement, construction of this facility. The, the county employees under Johnny and others have capability to construct the facility that's planned. The law, the code section that's listed here, 731345, requires that work, even work done by the county, where there's not going to be a standard bid process, that work cannot exceed a certain limitation of dollar value. It's $150,000. The project as initially discussed was in that range, subject to some further refinement of those calculations. Johnny has gone out. You may remember there's a concrete structure on this property. Walter, you're familiar with it?
Was.
Yes, it was. The removal of that concrete structure, that's an item that has to be considered under the law. The value of that removal, even done by county employees, has to be factored in. And so even with that value factored in, we still felt good that we were in, we were okay. After they got out there and started reviewing the dirt situation, Dale's crew discovered that the dirt out there is not appropriate. Cannot be used for either the pad for the building itself, certainly not the parking lot, and you think about the size and the weight of the vehicles that are going to be using it. And so the dirt situation had to be addressed. Three feet of uncut, Mr. Dale? When you start adding up the cost on the dirt, it goes quick. And so you can imagine, we, we feel confident in telling you now we're going to be above that number. And so in order to keep us from being in trouble with the auditor, we need to comply with this law. What does the law require? If you're going to go over the number, even if it's county employee work, if you're going to go over the number, you need an engineer, a licensed engineer, to provide engineering services and the appropriate licensure, the seals, and the other things that go with that in order to accomplish that project. And so the proposal before you asks for you to permit, Mr. Buster, to step in now to the role of serving as an engineer on this project to provide the, the compliance that we need with the law. That's what this is.
Okay, do we have a motion to authorize engineering services?
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Mr. President, item C is an update on the Chancery Court matter. Just as a reminder, several weeks ago, the former county administrator and I were ordered by the chancellors to appear before them. We were given information at that time from the chancellors about a sensitive matter involving security issues at Chancery Court. Those security issues were discussed with the board and executive session. You understand why, being sensitive issues, the court had entered an, has entered an order. That order is subject to the court's seal. That is, it's under the seal of the court. It's not subject to being discussed in a public forum. But I will remind you that in executive session, we gave you information. The issues that are the subject of that order are security issues related to the Chancery Building. This board authorized the retention by the court of a security consultant who made recommendations. Those recommendations have been provided to your administrative staff. Those recommendations have been reviewed with an architect, JHNH, that was hired by the board for a number of purposes. One of those is determining the scope of the emergency issues that are subject to the court's order. In addition to that, they were asked to look at certain ADA compliance issues that we have with certain court buildings, and they have been doing that. And so on the 25th, myself, Ms. Laura, Mr. Buster, and others attended a meeting with JHNH Architects and with members of the Mississippi Department of Archives and History, employees of that department who have jurisdiction over buildings exceeding 50 years in age. We asked them to come and to review the, the work that was ordered by the court. We asked them to come and review the state of the buildings themselves and to give us their feedback concerning the historical nature of the buildings and whether or not any sort of compliance would have to be considered by the county before we can get into these issues of bringing the buildings up to date. So after that review, they looked both at the Justice Court Building and at the Chancery Building. We attended another impromptu hearing with your chancellors on the 25th with all of those individuals that I mentioned. And Judge Fairly conducted an on-the-record hearing so that he could discuss with us and with DAH what he was expecting to come out. with DAH what he was expecting to come out of the, the issues on the Chancery Building. And so this is just simply to update you that those meetings have occurred. One important factor, the Archives and History folks understood very clearly after Judge Fairly got through talking that they needed to move quickly. And they did. They have provided us with what I call a clearance letter on the Chancery Building. And so I'm telling you, and in this public setting, I want everybody to know that the Chancery Building itself, 155 West Government Street, Chancery Building, is not eligible for landmark status under Department of Archives and History. That means that they do not have any jurisdiction over that building. They're not going to exercise any jurisdiction over that building. We do not have to talk to DAH about modifications, renovations, et cetera, to the Chancery Building.
What about the Brandon Historical Society?
If we do exterior renovations of any kind to the building, then there is the possibility that the Historical Preservation Commission could, would be, it would be necessary for us to advise them, to notify them, and to, to find out whether or not there was going to be any need to discuss those issues with them. To my knowledge, there are not any present plans to make modifications to the exterior of the building. To my knowledge, at the present time.
Tell me again, why are we even asked about?
Because the building is over 50 years of age. And if it is, they have preliminary jurisdiction. You go to them and tell them, this is the building we're talking about, this is what we'd like to do, and they tell you that they either will intercede and look for historical issues, or they will not. So the clearance letter is, we're not interested in that building.
So they're out of...
It has no historical significance. That letter's good for five years. So we're clear on the Chancery Building. That's not the case on the, on the old courthouse. So we're clear.
Right.
They very much are interested in that. And they don't have a choice because that building was placed on the National Historical Register in 1997. So they, they clearly, it's, it's already been determined at the federal level that it has historical significance.
At what point will we find out what it is that is expected of us to do at the Chancery?
We're still, as you know, the, the, the decision of this body in relationship to the emergency order that deals with security issues has, has already been authorized, already been passed. The, the information that was provided to the county includes a number of security enhancements, Jay, that in my opinion are the subject of an order under seal. And it wouldn't be, it's not appropriate without court permission, without a further order. It's not appropriate to discuss the scope of those improvements in an open forum.
Now, what about as far as when, and I know we've already started the preliminary talks and everything else, what, at what timeframe do we start moving forward with what they're ordering?
Those, those things have already started. Equipment has been ordered. To my knowledge, there are plans already in place to install the equipment.
Okay.
And, you know, I can, obviously, at the appropriate time, I can explain...
Right.
Further detail what those are. What, what you need to understand is that they address sensitive security issues and they are, at this time, the work that is ongoing is limited to those security issues. JHNH has been retained to look at other issues. Some of those include ADA compliance, which we're all aware of, and that relates both to the old courthouse and to the Chancery Building. That review is ongoing. No recommendations have been made at this time. We expect there to be some recommendations on that at some point. And you will have an opportunity then to deliberate as it relates to those recommendations. Okay? But, but as far as the security issues that were subject to the court's emergency order, those are in process. They're moving forward.
Now, that emergency order you referred to, Judge Fairly didn't put any if, ands, and maybe so's in there, did he?
Yes, sir. There's no discretion. He, he ordered the security improvements and enhancements to be made and funded.
Okay.
Okay. We're, we're moving forward with that.
And that's what's happening. All right? Okay. So I'm happy to answer any questions that I can answer.
No, it's, I think that you've pretty much, you've song and danced it pretty good there, Craig.
Yeah, that was quite a show.
Thank you very much. And the remainder under me is just to review the items. I don't see anything that, now that the Denali matter has been moved and, and handled, I don't think there's really anything that jumps out at me on the September new document.
Ms. Laura Oster, interim county administrator.
The first item that I have for you is the acknowledgement of receipt of proposals for lease purchase financing related to the county's purchase of emergency system communications and upgrades. What we did is, we had a, a quote from Motorola for financing. By statute, we have to go out and at least get another one. We went to our local bank that we, holds our accounts, Trustmark, and also received another one from Bancor South. So we're ready to recommend the financing for that communications upgrade.
Great, huh?
And the recommendation is to go with Trustmark as the lowest interest rate. The, the mechanics are the same, the build-out period of 18 months, first drawdown, 10-year payments, annual installments.
Okay. All right. So I have a motion...
What, what interest rate was that?
2.44.
So do I have a motion to...
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Morrison. Any more questions? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Can I jump in right quick and just remind us that with this action, we now know which Motorola contract to sign? And I see Bill back here. I just wanted to make sure that we're in a position now to, to be able to execute the appropriate contract with Motorola. So we, we will intend to do that probably today so that, so we don't see any, I, I think our contract, initial, our current contract terminates on the 30th. If I remember correctly.
That way, we don't have any gap.
Correct.
Yes, sir. We'll leave. Gotcha. Okay. Item B?
The next item I have is an, an update. And I'd ask that if we can, can we skip over that one and go ahead and discuss C while Rusty's here and also...
Yes, ma'am.
And she's waited so patiently.
Yes. So, 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 unless we've been here waiting, so if we can skip to that one, please.
As y'all know, we have a part-time employee that works for the Election Commissioners, assists me on elections. What I'm requesting us to discuss is convert that to a full-time position. Now, I'm not going to speak for Leslie because that's her employee, but she may or may not recommend a, a new employee or keep the same one. But I'm, I'm requesting this employee not only get more involved with elections, but also help her with all her name inputs and everything that they're doing, because I know they've been having hour issues where they've been going over their hours. So this would be an employee that would help them keep under their...
Stay under their timeframes.
That's correct.
Okay.
And it's not that we're wanting to keep the same person. We're wanting to try to get somebody a little bit younger.
Right.
Just because if you stay with the part-time, you're going to be looking at somebody that's going to be a little bit older and...
That's correct.
But I think with the younger, we can kind of work with them and...
Do we have anybody, anyone in?
No, not at this time. Not at this time. We didn't even entertain that discussion until we...
Till we talked, okay.
I thought the person worked for Becky.
No, last year, we put him under the Election Commission. The man that is working now had worked under Carol Swilly.
Yeah.
And then Becky just sort of assumed it not really, wanting to, it sort of fell under her. And when we used him, she got billed for it, and she really wasn't expecting that. And that's when she came, we came to the board and it was placed under the Election Commission part-time, and it was put in the budget.
Right. Yeah, he, she, Becky wasn't giving him any direction. The Election Commissioners and myself were, so it kind of fell under them.
We, so, but we won't keep, if we do this, we won't have the part-time afterwards?
That's correct.
Okay.
You'll eliminate the part-time position if you hire a full-time person?
Yes, sir.
When would this, are we talking the new fiscal year, or what are we talking?
I was thinking if we can find somebody before this election is coming up in November.
November.
Because it would be a great election to, to get them up to speed because it won't be, it won't be that intense.
Right.
Next year.
Yeah, be in the fiscal year of 2015.
We're going to be polished by next year.
That's correct. That's correct.
What are we doing now that we haven't been doing in the last 20 years?
To need another employee, a full-time.
There's, there's a couple answers to that. One is that, and we've, we've obviously beat this bush a number of times, but y'all relying on me to run elections, and it's getting to the point where it's getting more and more difficult to get the stuff done for elections on time so that the election runs smoothly. It really is. The last election, we ran up to the last minute trying to get the testing done and, and getting all that other stuff pumped out because we were having issues up here.
So we have here a discussion of hiring a full-time employee.
What do you, are you going to be able to, well, why even ask that? I know you will. But train somebody to really have the knowledge, I mean, to help you really?
That's my thought. My thought is that this full-time person would be the primary person. I'll be their backup. So in case they drop off, I'll, I'll take up. Like a...
So you're not really looking for a helper? You want somebody, you want to be the helper?
That's correct. That's correct.
How do the other places around the state do it? Don't the Circuit Clerk's Office usually do that?
Every county does it different from what we've discussed with, with the other counties. Two or three counties have a full-time employee, but most counties hire a, a company to handle it. For example, what Hines, $2 million deal they just did. And Madison County also pays ESNS to do everything. Both of them. ESNS delivers, ESNS picks up, does everything. We, on the other hand, we deliver, we pick up, we don't do the programming. We test, we maintenance the machines, except for once a year. We do all the ballots, we do all the entering and exporting into SIMS. Yeah, so we're doing everything but program.
With, and I know we use ESNS too on a part, partial basis.
That's correct.
Would it be feasible, and I know you probably, I probably already know this answer, but would it be feasible for ESNS to do everything, or would it be feasible, more feasible to have a full-time employee with what we're doing with ESNS?
I've had that discussion with ESNS. It, it's feasible to do both ways. Actually, they, we had a discussion with them about delivering and pickup, and they're actually proposing that they could do it cheaper than what we're currently doing. But as far as having an employee staff that night and staff that day and do the testing and stuff, I'd have to compare the costs. Because, you know, the costs for that have been outrageous in the past. And to add to that, it's a person with no vested interest in the county. You know, they usually fly in, they do what they gotta do, and they take off. So if there's a problem, it's Rankin County stuck here answering.
They're still looking at Rankin County.
And that's the reason I was pushing towards a full-time employee, because that full-time employee has to come back to work the next morning. If they screw up, they've got to have the accountability for it.
That's right. Okay.
What are we talking about? Salary on this employee?
Salary, yeah. Have you already considered what?
Haven't, haven't discussed that either.
You want to talk to, I guess, Laura afterwards and stuff and see if...
Yeah, today, today, my only goal was to, to broach this conversation and, and kind of bring it up to speed. I'm thinking another meeting we'll, we'll actually request approval.
Okay.
Okay.
Any more questions? Thank y'all. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
So you want to go on to D?
Well, I can do that one real quick and then we'll come back up to B. This is just the discussion of our work session at the year end. Usually, we have it on the last day of the fiscal year, which would be September 30th, and we would use that as our work session also. But I have an important meeting to go to on Gatsby on the 30th that's been pre-planned, so we want to move it back to the 29th to close out our year and also use that as the work session. I know it'll be a little bit earlier, but we'll just accomplish that. We just want to make sure basically that was okay, because Renee's setting her next series of hearings and things to come up. So if y'all are good with that, we don't have to take any action.
Whatever James tells me to do, that's fine.
Okay.
Long as it's not 1:00.
That's true. The next is, I just wanted to give you an update on the status of the managers' resumes. The time period's closed to get the resumes in. We have 15 resumes, and I just really want to know how y'all want to proceed with, now that we have them, how we're going to handle this. Are you all ready for us to set up a time to start going through the applications, give them to whoever needs to have one so that they can review them, and set up times, narrow it down to a, a certain number of people to be interviewed?
How many applications do we have?
About 15.
15.
I think that sounds like a good idea for somebody who's more, you know, inclined to that atmosphere, since I don't know anything about cows and horses. I think this is one for me not to participate in.
I myself, and I know that Jared honed in on it too, I would like to be a part of exactly, you know, because I do know it's part of events, you know, and anything like that, so I'd like to be a part of that with the 15, I mean, to get them maybe narrowed down to it.
Well, then we'll just all get applications, copies of them to everybody, and we'll just start proceeding with that.
Sounds like a plan.
Well, yeah, I can form a committee.
Well, I can form a committee of a couple, yeah.
Two supervisors, and we can't have a third one.
That's right. Myself and Jared.
You would be there, right? Is that what you're saying?
I would be there.
Well, it's not IT involved, so you wouldn't need to be anyway.
Who, who all are you going, who all?
I can have as many of y'all as we need.
Right. Well, now...
So would it be possible, once y'all get the list down, to maybe incorporate a couple people from that group that y'all had, that we did?
That's what I thought.
To let them listen in?
That's what I thought. I thought, um...
I've talked to Mr. Anderson.
Well, I'd like to see the short list, too.
And he said that he would be glad to do it, or somebody else, and he was fine with that. And he said, and even just sort of sit and observe or whatever.
Well, I kind of think it'd be good, better, be good if it was two from that group, really, other than obviously myself that was one of them. I want them to feel like they, you know, their meetings, all those weeks were, weren't in vain. They actually were a part of it.
Oh, yeah. They need to be, you know, a couple of them need to be a part of it.
That's fine. We just don't want to overwhelm somebody that we're interviewing with, you know, 10 or 12 people sitting on the committee interview.
No, no, they're, they're going to see what they're going to get in.
Well, I mean, if you had, okay, how many are you talking about being on there now? That's going to interview them.
One or two.
I know you and I, and let's say me, you, and Greg, and then Jim and...
And it would probably be good to have, not that he has to do the interview process, but sitting in maybe Dale because of the work that he does up there, and maybe even the sheriff or his person that is now Randy that's handling the FEMA safe room, just because they're going to have to interact with that.
Interact so much with it.
As far as, okay, but...
You're probably talking about seven people or so.
Boy, that'd thin the room out. You're all by yourself now, drunk.
Well, I've left before he could be put on the committee.
Look at that. Okay. But I think it'd be better if one more, really honest, I think it'd be better if one more of them...
Why don't we do myself?
And let, make Jim pick somebody.
Right. Myself, you, Ms. Laura, the sheriff, Dale, and two, Mr. Jim, Dr. Jim, and one more.
Let Jim, let's just let Jim pick somebody.
Pardon? Not necessarily the sheriff, but his...
Or your sheriff or your designate.
Okay.
So that's about seven people. That's not, that's not too, too big.
That's pretty big.
I wouldn't want to be interviewed by seven people.
No doubt.
They need, they need to know what they're walking into.
Okay, the next thing is just the review of the agenda items for the second. If y'all have any questions, do you have any questions under that section?
Yes, I do. Why are we, it doesn't seem right. I don't remember us ever doing this before, voting on the sheriff's budget before we have a work session, I mean, a public hearing.
We did, we did this last year, maybe even the year before because Mr. Wood has to recuse himself from voting on the sheriff's budget. And if, he can't vote on it if it's in with the whole thing. And we did do this last year.
But whenever we said the levy, he's voting for the sheriff's budget then too, right? I mean.
Well, not, not just that department though. I mean, it's not, he's, the levy's separate from that.
I get us voting separate on his, but why are we doing it before the public hearing? Shouldn't we hold the public hearing first?
We're not. We're having the public hearing back up here on, at the beginning, right after the old business. Craig is doing the public hearing that will have a time for comment.
Item five.
Item five, public hearing on the.
And then.
All right, I didn't see that.
When it comes over, we'll do that.
All right. All right. No, I just, I didn't see that part.
Anything else that y'all see that you need to? Question?
Yeah, we're, uh, we're changing over our HVAC. Did we do a bid on that?
We did, uh, request for proposals on that. And we had three proposals come in, and this was the lowest.
Now, when, it, is that as, as it is now, or are they gonna be doing any upgrades?
Well, Craig can speak to that because I believe he helped draw the.
The RFP?
Right.
What that covers is every, every unit in the county that is subject to the service agreement that's under fifteen years of age in service means, what that means is they are required to maintain it, which also includes the free on. So you get the maintenance and the free on for everything that's fifteen and under. That's in the RFP. So the quoted price is for that service. Any unit that is over fifteen years of age where they find that maintenance and/or free on is required, you have to pay the associated cost for that.
For them to do it. Right.
Exactly. So it's, there's a breakpoint in there, and we, you know, we interacted with several different companies that provide this service to try to find a, a sort of a happy medium on an age breakpoint that makes sense. And everybody pretty much agreed, you know, not getting fifteen years out of it. But after that, you really can't expect somebody to constantly put free on into a unit that's fifteen years or more because it will be coming back constantly.
So everybody was, uh, we, we're not gonna have anybody come back later, especially the company we have now that is, uh, I mean, we got that much of a savings to change.
Well, you know, currently we're, we're with Hermetic Rush, so this is a new, this is the.
Well, how come, what, we, we bid that?
I don't, yeah, as you say, I don't remember us.
I don't either.
Do anything on that. I guess that's why, because we just took proposals. I guess Johnny did that.
Right. And I think that Craig did the RFP, and there was sort of just a fill-in-the-blank form, so all the companies were filling in the exact same, working off of the same specifications, filled it in, submitted it sealed, and we opened them and went through them.
And this was low bidder?
And this was the lowest, yes. And I believe our contract ends at the end of the month.
What is, uh?
How long's this for?
This one is, this contract will run through seventeen. From September to, um, fourteen through seventeen.
Was there any problem with the other?
See, that's great.
Have we had any problems with Hermetic Rush?
Uh, the answer to that is that there's been some disagreement on the scope of services and some difficulty, uh, getting some services taken care of because of disputes over what is or is not covered. And, uh, we had enough of an issue back several months ago that we actually put them on notice that we intended to terminate. And as a result of that, we were able to work some things out, and so it got better. Uh, but when it came time for, you know, we knew we were gonna go, we were gonna have the RFP going out soon. So it gave us an opportunity to really refine that RFP to something that Johnny felt like is the way to go for us.
So is this something that we're not going to have to deal with again then? In terms of the issues with them, or are we gonna have the same issues with this company?
Well. I can't, I can't predict that, Jay, but the RFP is very clear in these breakpoints. Whereas the prior contract.
So you addressed some of those?
Less, less of questions.
Yeah, so you cleared up some of that.
Yeah, we, we were able to close some loopholes.
Good.
Can I ask a question about, what about after I was called? They can just respond?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That's, that's part of it, absolutely. Twenty-four seven call.
Sheriff, how'd your siren test go today? Uh, they bailed on you.
No, we had, uh, issues with four of them, and they reset them, and then we had issues with one of them, so right now.
And that's after getting your new board in?
Still got a few bugs, but it's a lot better than the last test. The majority of both, the sheriff's office and the EOC were, were able to set off, uh, the majority of them.
Good.
Yeah. That's not good. Majority is not good.
Well, no, if I got, if you, you got it all down to but one?
The, yeah, the, my understanding of one did not work, and it's supposed to be a battery issue, but we had actually talked about, uh, it, this, this has been such an issue that I'm actually putting deputies at each siren in the county, and we're gonna start testing the first and the fifteenth. We're gonna start checking twice a month instead of just one.
Just like what we had talked about, I guess, a couple weeks ago, doing the first and the fifteenth.
And the fifteenth was so bad, we had to do another one, did they?
Yeah, we did another one today, and there'll be another one the first.
But this is after you got your new system?
Right, this is all the new equipment.
That's new, right.
So whenever we bought all that, and that's what I was confused on, I guess, is whenever lightning hit it, I thought we paid for replacement stuff.
Me too.
No, that was, I think that was piecemeal, I believe, what Rusty told us.
What did I say?
Didn't you say?
You better listen up.
Or, didn't you say that we had to, on his system, we had to put some piecemeal, try to, for his system?
Whenever, whenever we originally had problems, we, we bought a new system or a new board or something new.
You put that at EOC. We, they fixed it.
Yeah, the new computer was at EOC. So now both of them can set off.
Now I have a new computer and a new, whatever the other thing is.
But the other, but at his place, whenever the lightning hit it, we just kind of.
Yeah, we've been getting stuff together until, until new equipment could be put in.
Correct.
And what got hit by lightning was like twenty-something years old, so, you know, it, they couldn't just fix it.
Right.
So do we know why, though, that, you know, the last time we had all these problems, and they said they had it all fixed up, ready to go, and then we did the test on the fifteenth?
And that's the issue too, we need to look at down the road, because the, the system that I have in dispatch, it's, it's in there to say that, that they're testing the sirens, it's testing the sirens, the test is complete, everything's fine, when it wasn't. Uh, because again, several of the sirens didn't go off, so now we're gonna have to have a person on the ground to do it. But I wish that we could look at finding a better system to, to test them on the computer, you know, let the computer test them. But we know for sure there's a, there's a problem.
Yeah, 'cause the last time Bill and them were here, they was like, oh, we got, they were just out of sync. We got them all synced up. They're all good to go.
That's my understanding is that why our, why the sheriff's office couldn't set them off because it was, they weren't synced together, they had to have exact times.
Yeah.
And that was blamed on the old computers that were struck by lightning.
But you got a new one now.
So everything's brand new now, so it should be working fine. And, uh, my, what the computer says, the problem with the one that didn't work is a battery, so that's supposed to be being repaired as we speak right now. And again, we should have another test.
Was that on three-pronged roofs?
No, it was out of Charlotte.
Okay. Just make sure that one worked.
Not the one at Dan Tucker's?
I think it was.
Oh, my God. Well, they didn't know we were gonna do the test today anyway.
That's right. You're good to go, man.
Maybe we're going first.
You're good to go.
What's, um, on the consent, one A, the acknowledgment of receipt of requisition certificate from Bloomfield? What's that?
Craig can answer that, Vanessa, on Bloomfield.
One A.
On the consent.
Consent.
Yeah, whatever that is.
Oh, 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 thi- this is the tip, this is the first step in the process of, of, of the, uh, the tip on Bloomfield Development. They have to send to us documentation showing that they have complied with their part of the development agreement. So they sent us the certificate of expenditures, what they spent out there to justify the later bond issue. This is just our acknowledging receipt of their document. That's all this is. We got their information.
Okay.
On that, uh, under C, under the agreements, is that, I assume this lady passed away?
She, uh, has been declared NCM, and, uh, she has a, an agent in fact stepping in to serve as her agent.
Okay, so they'll be getting the money for now?
Yes, correct.
Sheriff, the, uh, quality correctional healthcare, that's a great one. That's what, isn't that the same one that you had went out before and gotten a good quote on?
This is, this is the third one we went to. Yeah, that, this one's got a little bit better.
Right.
And right now they're doing great.
Good, okay.
He's just getting him to sign the contract because the other one, it's terminated.
You know, the other one?
Yes, and so now it's to get him to sign the contract.
Time to go, okay, renew.
We approved it, and then this termination is complete, so this is a new contract.
Renew contract.
And so, so for y'all to sign, this one is the new one for that other one.
I got you, okay.
What kind of a, a head of schedule, aren't we? Don't we normally like do our public hearing for our budget the fifteenth meeting?
It's late when we do it on the fifteenth.
Yeah, she push, she don't like it.
We do it on the first Monday of September.
We have before done it on the fifteenth.
It's pushing it if it's done on the fifteenth.
You see her start sweating on the fifteenth, so.
Because that's the deadline it has to be done by.
Yeah. Right. She doesn't like it on the fifteenth. All right. Any more questions on the, uh, agendas for September second? Mr. Slay, we got executive session?
Yes, we, we got a couple matters that we need to take in executive session. One of them is a personal issue. The other is, uh, acquisition, acquisition of little state.
Okay. About a motion to discuss the need to go in executive session?
So.
Motion by Mr. Johnson. Second by Mr. Morrison. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign. Motion carries.
Yeah, I'll be here. I definitely will be here.
I still don't clear why we gotta do it since we told you got one.
Outside this field, so I'll be here until a few minutes before then, and then I don't know how long it'll take, but I'll be here.
Glad to have you here today.
Thanks.
We're all for quiet.
Oh, well, I don't have any really questions right now.
You can public comment anytime.
What?
You can sign up for public comment anytime.
Oh, okay. It's good to know. I don't really have any public comment right now.
Okay.
Should I?
I guess not.
College Street, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, College Street, I got everything on the left side. Lewis Wilson on it. All the way out to eighteen, I go all the way to Heber Hill. That's my line.
Okay.
Yeah, but it's on probation, it's not mine.
I didn't know about Ruth.
Yeah, I think it's a state that made it on probation. It's not far from probation.
Well, I bet I want him on it.
I didn't realize he was.
He represented.
He took it up there from her, like, she. Plus the telephone register she was having along, so that's where she received the calls, and she needs five or four, five charges in there.
Put your name right on the sign.
It's okay.
I'm sorry, I guess so they can read that.
No, that's wrong.
So we deserve this honor.
Man, I'm just kinda hanging out, just come out and try to learn. May they put me, give me a couple signatures here. My Mexico car, this DLA wrecked up.
You know it's mine, no?
Yeah. I was trying to.
It's, it's, it's to give me one, because he's got.
Oh, is that what you're doing? You gotta get that, no?
Yeah, I got it.
Just talk to the phone.
Every time you got to do it?
Yeah, so we're right at the finish. On our right, you can serve.
Y'all, wow, every time.
Every time.
And they got me in your district, too.
I'm seated right now, and I gotta get a signature. Yeah. No, you gotta be in my district.
I don't know if I'm in this district. East Deer Ranch? I thought so, but I wasn't sure. Been so many years.
Where are you voting on that?
I was telling my brother.
She's not sure. She, she's.
I'm voting down it, um.
You voted, you voted that church that out, Charlotte, or Charlotte or something.
Yeah, the telephone.
Not you?
No, I'm still, you're voting on Luckney now.
That's for, that's for, um.
Just for this, too.
For that, too? Yeah, it's on Luckney now, on, um, what's the name of that?
Fellowship, New Vision.
New Vision Fellowship. That was the first time, yeah.
Yeah, you and mine, that's good. Get you outside. We got extra, just in case.
Well, I think he's using the last one on that line, so.
Looky there, you might get re-elected yet.
Totally, you're gonna be able to.
It is.
But you gotta have fifty people.
Yeah, you're, you're already there. That is something. I'm hungry. I, I've had to skip lunch, go out of board meeting today.
I told you, uh, to, um.
Yeah, just gonna tell you going down the floor.
What'd you say was New Vision Fellowship?
Members of that committee.
Hey, Craig, so New Vi- New Vision, New Vision.
Oh, I got you.
You're in District Four, you're in Walters District, right?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Well, that's what I meant.
I'm in Brown.
Hey, did you hear that woman protesting your, uh, your building out there?
For what?
If it wants to be built.
It's across the road.
I thought it was back down the road, at the end of the road down there.
No, it's the end of the road.
Now, this is all industrial down that road.
This is the same, man.
So why would somebody be opposed to it down there then?
Who stole my thing?
This right here.
This is actually.
Did I lay it down?
No, it's, I have black.
Here, I got black. No, things are all mine, but I got a big one. Is that it? I got plenty of that. Well, you need to know.
No, no, that's all I'm.
You want blue one to go with it?
No, no, I'm good. I am good.
What's doing?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's on my carpet color, but if you want me to put you down in that place, I'll, yeah.
Yeah, and he said. Is this on the, is this the same meeting? Was that the date we gave him?
He said me instead of him. He said me instead of him because he knows he probably.
Okay, I need y'all to get on the.
Your district goes all the way to that? Yes. I go all the way up four seventy-four. Yeah, well, I got everything on the right side all the way until I get up there.
County line.
What, I get up there to my house by family, I get it on both sides.
Okay, this is what I'm applying.
Fanny Landing Circle, yeah, that way I got both sides, and then I got four seventy-one comes into town, and I go up College Street all the way to Creek.
Right?
Yeah, and then I go back to the left and go all the way to Heber Hill. And then I take Charlotte, and I got everything on both sides of Charlotte and there. Then we get out there and buy wire.
We're just playing my life. Is that four you get to forty-three?
We are recording.
We are recording. I got just a little forty-three.
Craig.
And then it... And you say we are still recording? It's just Pearl.
That's a pretty big area. Need dirt Pearl.
Yeah. I got, now I got a form.
Doing business, so we're, well...
Yeah, that wouldn't be, that, that thing I was talking about, wouldn't be possible location?
We're still, we're still recording, okay. So we're going to talk about, uh...
What?
We, we got two matters on executive. We got a, uh, we have a personnel issue, and then we have an acquisition of property.
We have two personnel and, um, acquisition of real estate.
Right. The acquisition of property involves, of the, uh, Rankin First property that's on Highway eighty.
Yeah.
Uh, the possibility that the county would take that building back from Rankin First. So that's the acquisition. It's just a possibility.
Okay. Do I have a motion to go on executive session?
I move.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign.
I said aye.